Yeah, I'll be there. Thank you.
Hey, are we ready to go?
Ready when you are.
Do you have an extra copy of these? I think there's.
I will work on that.
What do you need, Ryan? I just, I think we're one short of everything.
We've got a printer jam going on right now, but.
Thank you.
You're up first. I think we should start.
Okay. Let's go ahead and call the SKA planning commission meeting for May 24th, 2023. An unusual one at 2:03 in the afternoon, which might be a new change. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hartwig. Commissioner Hawks.
Here.
Commissioner Sager.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
Commissioner Perkins.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
And Chair Wheeler.
Here. Okay. Going down the agenda here, first thing is approval of the April 27, 2023 minutes. And I believe we got a, or got those in our staff report. A meeting packet. So looking for a motion on this. Mr. Chair, I motion. We had a motion from Commissioner Carpenter. Do we have a second? And a second from Commissioner Hawks. Any discussion needed? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Unanimous approval? Got it. Thank you.
All right. So we have some commission business we have to deal with. Normally slated for last meeting, but we had some attendance issues, including myself. So we have a vote for chair and a vote for vice chair that we need to take care of. And I believe this is a yearly vote. Right, Tom? You're the resident historian on the planning.
Yearly.
Okay. So do we need a motion? Do I take motions for all of them?
Yes.
So.
So I'm not sure, so I'm gonna say yes.
Let's go ahead and do this. Let's do motions for chair.
I heard a motion for you.
Second. So we have a motion and a second for me to continue my chairmanship. Any other motions for chair? Since we have no motions.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, here I am for another year, guys and gals. Thank you. How about for vice chair? Do we have a motion for vice chair for the 2023? We have a motion for Tom Sager on the floor. Second. And we have a second for Tom Sager. A motion by Commissioner Hartwig and a second by Commissioner Carpenter. Any other motions? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor of Commissioner Sager for another year at vice chair, please raise your right hand.
Okay, unanimous approval.
Here we are, another year. Okay. Let's keep moving on. We're doing well so far.
I back you up.
So we have three public hearings, is that correct?
Um, yes, but the public hearing for the applicant for 2023-02 LP, it's the Clayton partition that's out on Lawrence Road. Both the applicant and the property owner requested that that one be continued to June 21st, the next planning commission.
Okay.
Meeting. So unless there are any objections among the planning commission, staff supports that. There's some logistics that still need to be worked out with that application.
So the other two subdivision, 2023-02S and partition 2023-03 LP are still on the table.
Yes.
Okay, let's just go right down the list then. Subdivision 2023-02-S. The applicant Steve Locke is proposing a, actually, let me back up. Is it Locke or Locky? Locke. See, I got it right. Okay. The applicant Steve Locke is proposing a 19 lot industrial subdivision of 27.09 acres of land described as tax lot four or 34E, Section 17, 2900. It's own light industrial currently. And from there, Taylor, I'm gonna kick it off to the planning staff or Alan, whoever's taking this one.
That'd be me.
For the staff report.
All right. Good afternoon, commissioners, applicants, and members of the public who come today. I'm going to present our staff report on the application number 2023-02-S for the proposed Lock Martin Industrial subdivision. Go to the second slide, please. You did, sorry. Okay, we can see this detail from the comp plan map. But the site area is located in the M1 Light Industrial. That's all the lavender up there. And the site area is the kind of diamond shaped square up there. So it runs up against the section of the city's Western Urban Growth Boundary. That would be Farmstead Road right there. And it also borders several unincorporated properties to the south. And those are zoned RR55 or RRFF5. And that's rural residential farm forest five acre, and that's Clackamas County designation. Next slide, please. We'll take a closer in look, and we can see Northwest Noble Drive to the north and Park Avenue is stubbed on the eastern property line. Next slide. And this is an aerial view. And we can see this is a, it's a pretty recent picture, and it's currently undeveloped. This parcel. Next slide, please. And this is from the submitted preliminary site plan. The subject site is just over 27 acres. And the applicant proposes creating 19 new lots in two public local streets. And one is an extension of Park Avenue, and it terminates in a cul-de-sac off to the west there. Street improvements would be required to city standards. So there'd be sidewalks on all sides of the new streets. And a crosswalk would be required across Martin Street and Park Avenue. City services will also be required. And that would include new water mains, sewer mains, stormwater facilities, et cetera. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned, all the lots are in the M1. And that means that there are no minimum lot sizes. But the smallest lots are just under one acre as proposed. And as expected, in the light industrial zone, the site is surrounded by businesses dealing in things like construction, laser cutting, chrome plating, marijuana processing, and the like. And the site benefits from quick access to and from Highway 224, either via Park Avenue or River Mill Road. And it's about two miles to downtown, just about a four minute drive. Next slide, please. Next slide. So now we'll take a look at the public improvements proposed and required, starting with the utilities. So Kurt MacLeod, the city engineer, he signed off on the applicant's proposed utilities plan. And upon approval of this application, the applicant will work with Kurt, the city engineer and Public Works Department to finalize these designs and find the most efficient beneficial routing of the water sewer and stormwater systems and such. The applicant proposes dedication of a tract that's adjacent to the existing stormwater pond. You can see that in the top left corner there. And that would be in order to mitigate the additional burden that this, that this subdivision would create on that existing pond. Next slide, please. And so, as I mentioned, two streets are proposed. One's an extension of Northwest Park Avenue, which terminates in a cul-de-sac with a turnaround, built to city and fire district standards. Second street is Northwest Martin Street, and that would be a brand new street originating from Northwest Park Ave and stepping at the southern property boundary as shown. And both would be built to city standards for local streets. And as I said, sidewalks on all sides of the new streets in a crosswalk. Staff is also recommending that a five foot shared use path and a 10 foot easement be provided that would connect the cul-de-sac to Southeast Farmstead Road to the west. That's not shown there, but it would probably be that little, like a little line connecting Farmstead in the cul-de-sac. And so one of the purposes of the code is to ensure public access to cul-de-sacs, or at least this, a certain section of the code, for public safety and convenience. So staff finds that a path is warranted because normally the city would require that full vehicular and pedestrian access be punched all the way through to southeast Farmstead, as well as half-street improvements that would have to be done along Farmstead, which, as I said, comprises the full western boundary of the subject property. But since we're allowing the applicant to build the cul-de-sac and not requiring improvements on Farmstead, we're just recommending requiring this shared use path. I've had a couple of conversations in the past week with the applicant team about the path, and I imagine that they'll probably want to give some comments to planning commission about, about that later in the hearing. Okay, next slide, please. So the applicant submitted a traffic impact study as required. And the study examined three intersections, which I've notated there with the arrows, the orange arrows. And that would be the first one is Northwest Park Ave at Northwest Campus Drive. And then second is Northwest Park Ave at Highway 224. And third one is River Mill Road at Highway 224. And the study found that all three intersections are expected to fail to meet their respective performance targets under projected traffic conditions in the year 2026. And the TIS also found that upon completion of the extension of Northwest Martin South to River Mill Road, that's that blue line that I drew there, and construction of a new traffic signal at the intersection of 224 and River Mill Road. That's number three down at the bottom right corner. That those three study intersections would operate acceptably. And so, since the installation of a traffic signal at 224 and River Mill is a project that is currently included in the city's transportation system plan and SDC schedule, the city is committing to conducting a ward analysis for either a traffic signal or roundabout, some kind of traffic control mechanism at the intersection of Highway 224 and River Mill Road by the year 2026. And followed by its installation, if it's found warranted and permitted by ODOT. That was a mouthful. Okay, next slide, please. So in this report, we have 47 conditions of approval listed, and I'm just gonna go over some of the highlights and the main points. So all public improvements will be provided as required by our code. And as discussed, that includes water, sewer, stormwater, street improvements, as well as lighting and private utilities. All utilities will be undergrounded. And as per our code, all these improvements must be completed or bonded for before the plat is submitted for final approval. And then the streets and sidewalks would be built to city standards, discussed. Driveways were not included in the preliminary plans that were submitted, but that's fine. It's totally fine. It just meant we weren't able to review the driveways for code compliance, spacing, and whatnot. So we included a condition that requires city spacing standards to be met for driveways. The effects of construction will be mitigated to the extent possible. We required conditions related to erosion control plans, submitting one of those plans, which would require that unsurfaced open areas be revegetated after development. A traffic management plan will be submitted, showing how the impacts of construction traffic on city streets will be minimalized as well. And finally, fire code standards will be met. So several conditions related to fire safety pertaining to hydrants, street design, water flow, and the like are included. Next slide, please. And just one last note before I discuss the next steps. There was a typo in the newspaper notice for this land use application. And we just want to let people know that this application will be considered by council on June 12th and not June 26th. We also sent out corrected notices to all owners of property within 100 feet of the subject site. Okay, next slide, please. Okay. And next step is to begin the phase of the hearing where public comment is considered. And first, the applicant will have a chance to provide the comments to planning commission. And after that, any members of the public who wish to speak in favor, against, or neutrally about this application can do so. And then planning commission can direct any questions they may have to staff or the applicant. And then finally, planning commission will close the public hearing and decide to approve, approve with conditions, deny the applications, or continue this hearing to a specified future date. And with that, I thank you and hand it back over to planning commission.
All right. Do we have any questions for staff on the staff report? I'm not seeing.
I have one.
There we go.
Uh, the, the portion about the SDCs, paying for the, the traffic light or the roundabout. What, what is proportionally the expected SDC amount from this, and how is that fitting in with the total cost of the project and everybody else who's presumably on the hook for SDCs for that?
Do you, are you asking what the, what the number, like the dollar amount is?
Yeah, I mean, it just says in here that it will, it will be that, 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 it actually strangely says that the applicant conditions of approval will require the applicant to install a signal, and I'm sure this, that.
That might be the old. I think that's the old, that's the old staffer.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I printed out names.
Yeah, and I, I guess I'm, you know, it says that the SDC is from this, and it says proportional. So I'm assuming other, other projects that have been in development over the last few years will also proportionally pay for that. But what are those numbers like, and what is, what does that mean?
Yeah, when some, when a project gets included in our SDC, gets adopted into our SDC schedule, that means that every building permit in the whole city, a proportional share from that building permit fee gets allocated toward the cost of that project. So obviously, this, the lots in this subdivision aren't gonna be the only ones contributing to traffic at that intersection. Especially because it's the highway intersection. You can imagine that all of the lots in the city are probably contributing to traffic at that intersection. So when something gets, when a project gets adopted into the SDC schedule, that means that from that point on, every building permit that gets issued has a contribution toward that SDC project. So it's not, it would be hard to say exactly what this, this subdivision's proportion of that is, because it's really small compared to all the rest of the development that's also contributing to that project cost, which is estimated at under a million dollars, I think Kurt was estimating. Did that help?
So the, the SDC, the total SDC contribution to that project will be under a million dollars. And then the project itself will probably cost a lot more than that. Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
No, no. Yeah, go ahead.
Is this on all SDCs from past, present, and future building?
No.
So the project, that project was, I think, only recently adopted into the SDC schedule. And even if, even it was, even if it was only adopted, like, the day before this hearing, which I don't know exactly when it was adopted, but the city's ability to cover the cost of that project doesn't require us to have actually collected all of those SDCs. Having the project adopted into our SDC schedule basically allows us to finance the project, because we know that we will, we will generate that revenue with the continued construction that's happening.
Well, I'm thinking on that, is there any state or county help for a state highway like that?
That's a great question, too. Yes, the state has a statewide, it's STIP, statewide transportation improvement program, question mark? It's something like that. And it's kind of their version of a, of a TSP slash capital improvement plan. And projects get included and funded by the, by the STIP if they, if the warrant analysis shows that that project is warranted. And so, ODOT's comments on this needed project were essentially to that, to that point. They, they can tell that that project is gonna be needed. We still need to go through and conduct the warrant analysis for them to check, you know, check that box. But then, once that warrant analysis does indeed show the project is needed, then they can contribute some proportion of their STIP funds to help us pay for that project. Just the, just the, I forget what the other intersections were. It, that only, that only accounts for projects in ODOT jurisdiction, so like the highway. Yeah.
Yep, one more question.
Question. What is the turning radius for the cul-de-sac? Is that sufficient for a semi truck?
I mean, it's, it satisfies our code. So I hope that our code is sufficient for a semi truck.
Okay. Being in an industrial area, it's gonna have, potentially have.
I think the fire department commented on that, didn't they?
The fire department didn't submit any specific comments for this application, actually. There's just the, the conditions that are included that have to do with fire are kind of the more boilerplate ones that we basically we put into all the subdivision condition applications. Yeah.
I'm not standing here. I'll keep digging though. We'll, we'll circle back to that.
Yeah. Yeah, I can find that.
Any other questions before we jump into the public hearing? All right, let's go ahead and close the planning commission meeting real quick. And we will open the public hearing. We'll invite the applicant and any parties that are involved with them to come up to the mic, introduce yourself, and speak on behalf of your application. And that's a, that's an invite. You don't have to, but you're more than welcome to.
How you guys doing? All right, so I'm Steve, Steve Locke, and we just wanted to say how grateful we are to be able to put a project together like this and develop these lots. And for, that there's gonna be businesses here, and jobs are gonna be created, and, you know, we, we are already in the park. We have a couple acres in there, and as we've grown, we've had more employees come, and we've had families move out here, and they live in Essicata, and they work in Essicata, and they got kids in Essicata. And I, I just think it's really such an asset to be able to, and a privilege to be able to be part of this. We're really grateful, my wife and I, and my partner, and and our whole team, really. And so, and I've also wanted to make sure I noted that we've worked with Taylor and Alan and Brian on a number of other projects. We are, we build, we work in a lot of jurisdictions all over the state and Washington, and been doing it for 25 years, and we just are thrilled to be able to work in Essicata, really, to be able to create revenue here in Essicata, and also just work through the permit process. And we're just really grateful to work with such good people. You know, and as we've gone through this process, we've, you know, been able to work and negotiate and come to good. We're, we're really looking out for the best of the community. You know? And so that's been one of the things on my heart, is that we don't want to have a negative impact on our neighbors. And we take that to heart, you know, love your neighbor as yourself. And that's really, we want to live that way as we work and live. And one of the, the, really, the only thing in this entire project that just kind of rubs me the wrong way is really the pathway that has been asked for us to put this pathway in. And it's really not even so much about putting a pathway and putting a five foot walkway. But it's, it's in an industrial park, and there really aren't any walkers. People walking, you know? You know, I, we're there. And there are sidewalks, and you might see one person in a month. And it's your neighbor walking down the street, walking his dog. The, the sidewalks don't really get used in industrial park. And it makes me think there's really no destination point for anybody to go back there. But who's the impact of that gonna be? It's gonna be our neighbors on Farmstead, the residents. And I feel like it all, we've been broken into three times down there. I think that, that access back there also gives access to most undesirable, you know, thieves. That I could see that as an access point, them coming on that road. We don't want to drive people onto Farmstead. We want to really, in my mind, these are people living, their families. They want to live their lives, and, and I want to be able to have the least impact on them. And I know that we've, even in designing the lights, we've been thinking about and want to do shielding the lights, so it doesn't impact our neighbors as much, even if it costs us a little extra. And we don't have to do that. We chose to do those things extra. So I, that, that's really my only thing, is that it, it just seems like what's the purpose of having a pathway is to be used to walk on? And it's just not gonna be anybody walking on it to start with. You gotta build the path. You gotta put lights up. You gotta pay a light bill, and you gotta maintain it forever. So it just seems like there's no return on investment to do it. So that's really the only thing that I have to say about that.
Thank you.
Sound good?
Any, any questions for him? Thank you, Steve.
All right, thank you.
Does anybody else wish to come up and speak on behalf of the applicant?
Hi, my name is Dan Simmons. I'm the civil engineer. And I wanted to address your question about the truck turnaround. That's got a 100-foot diameter, which is industry standard for turning around a semi. And so I think the size, the, the city standards are sufficient, as I'm getting out on the size of the cul-de-sac. And then there was a condition of approval, I think, might be more standard language about a traffic control plan. We are at the end of a dead end street. And I think that there won't be any impacts to traffic other than normal traffic out at the intersections, which is kind of anticipated in the, in the, in the traffic impact statement or impact study. I don't see, foresee any need for any lane closures or anything like that, that's in the currently operating system, since we're on the, when we're on a dead end. So I'm not sure what the value of traffic control plan would be, but if, if we have to get into the public right of way to do something, certainly, we'd provide proper closure.
Yeah, I, if I recall correctly, that condition of approval is something that we've been adding to all of the subdivision conditions for the purpose of addressing issues that have come up during construction, during the subdivision construction, not the long-term, you know, post-build-out traffic.
Right, but I, I don't see any intermingling of construction, traffic, and construction in the public right of ways.
I see.
Just because we're in Dead End.
Okay.
That's it. Thanks. Any other questions?
No, I think. Thank you.
I have a hand raised on the Zoom.
Oh, okay, let's go ahead and have them speak up. Is it Mara?
Michael Ard?
Oh, yeah, that's me. So I'm the transportation engineer that prepared the traffic study for the project. I wanted to clarify a couple of things. One's a question, and one is a statement. So in watching the staff report, there was one thing that I just wanted to clarify, because the diagram showed an extension of Martin Street to resolve the, the problems that would otherwise occur with those three study intersections. I wanted to be clear that really the key is making a connection between the site and the public roadway to the south. And that can come in either the form of the extension of Campus Drive or Martin Street. So it isn't necessary to actually construct Martin Street across that property in order to resolve the traffic issue there. The other thing was related to the city spacing standards, and that was a bit of a question, because I, I was surprised to see Condition 44 call for a minimum spacing of 150 feet, which is not met for the existing subdivision. Looking at the code in Section 16.116030, it has the requirements for driveway spacing, and those list the minimum spacing requirement for private driveways on a local street as 15 feet, and for public driveways as 150 feet. So I wondered whether that was being considered a public driveway, and I would cite to Code Section 12.12025 as a potential source of clarification for that. It is the table that provides standards for private access driveway widths, and it includes four categories of private driveway. They are single-family residential, multifamily residential, commercial, and industrial. All of those are considered private driveways. I think the intent of the code was for public driveways to refer to schools and public facilities rather than private development that is publicly available. But I just wanted to bring that up to staff and ask that. Uh, but I just wanted to bring that up to staff and ask that question and see if we can, uh, resolve that and know with certainty what the minimum spacing standard is.
Thanks for bringing that up, Michael. We will, we'll take a look at that.
Michael, before you go, this is Chair Wheeler. Uh, just to go back to your, uh, you were citing road names and you said Campus Drive. Once that's completed through south to River Mill, that alleviates the problem. Yes. Martin Drive would also alleviate.
Correct.
And that being that that's under construction, it should.
Come online. Yes.
Sometime this summer, we should be okay on that then.
It, it'll be complete before, um, this development can get going. So yeah, there isn't going to be an issue ultimately.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions? Oh, we got one more. Go ahead, Rick.
Taylor. Um, who made the decision to put a cul-de-sac at the end of that? Uh, I see that, I know that they're backed up to the, uh, urban growth boundary, but, uh, Northwest Noble Drive is dead-ended there. And is there a potential for future development to the west? And if there is, should that street go through?
Looking at Alan, like, do you want this fun question? So this is probably, well, this is ultimately a city council question and it's timely because we're updating our transportation system plan. We've had a couple of conversations, both at former planning commission meetings and I think one of the stakeholder group meetings for the transportation system plan. Where we've discussed whether or not it really makes sense for Farmstead Road to be planned to eventually become built out as a minor collector. Um, because do we really think that the UG, that the urban growth boundary is going to be expanded either, uh, westward or northward in that direction? And if not, does it make sense? This is a kind of open question to you all in the city council. Does it make sense for Farmstead Road to be developed as an urban connect, you know, connectivity street? Um, and if not, some people have expressed disagreeing with that current classification. Um, if not, then the answer would be to de- declassify it or demote it to a, just a local street. Um, and deprioritize connections to it. So when this subdivision came in for their pre-app meeting, we posed that question to the city engineer and, you know, cited the conversations that we've had in the past about not making sense to improve or connect to that street. Um, and the city engineer agreed that as long as the council agrees, um, it would be fine not to punch that road through to Farmstead Road. Um, so that leaves the question with you all in the city council. How do you want to see Farmstead Road developed? You know, as an urban minor collector, like it's currently classified? In which case we would want to connect streets to that collector, um, or not. And so that is one of the big question marks for you all tonight and for the council next month.
I, I have a comment on, I live on, on the road. Um, and it, just for clarity, that road dead ends about thirty feet north of where that road would punch through, um, into a, into a private, uh, driveway. That's, that goes along there. And, um, so there's, to my mind, there's, there's no reason to let it ever be anything other than what it is, which is a road that accesses, you know, like what ten, ten houses that are, ten to twelve houses that are on it and the gravel pit and the, um, Noble Drive, which, which does come through there and then stops because it, it can't go into, it, it, you know, it's, it's not going any further. Is it, is kind of a nightmare for us and it's a nightmare for the quarry. There's always cars coming on. People driving around the little blockade fence and trying to go fishing in the, the, the bass pond, which is dangerous. You know, it's, it's, it, it's not great. And I, I personally, I have some comments for later on the walking path too, but, um, I wish that Noble Drive had been a cul-de-sac. It wouldn't probably stop people from wanting to access Farmstead. But it might've, you know, it might've changed the layout so that there was a building behind there and it wouldn't be as tempting as it is. And I, I can't imagine what would, what would change, I mean, to allow us to need to use that road as a, as a collector when there's, even if so, even if we get to a point where the UGB needs to expand, which we know that we have like a twenty-year at least runway of housing needs satisfied in the UGB. The idea that, that people that live there along the river are going to want to sell their place. I, I don't know. It just, it just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me.
Okay. As Taylor said, we discussed this ourselves. Um, and there's a couple of people on this commission that was on it when we designed that park for the industry area anyway. And it was, it was agree upon by everybody that we would not punch anything into that street. I, I realized nobody could find anything around here. But, um, it's only, it's only right that, you know, we leave that alone. Yeah. Number one, you know, you, like she just said, if we, you have to develop their property too, because the roads are so narrow back there. So that's where it came from. It came from the original sit, sit-down um, designing stages here in the community center. And we agreed. Now, obviously, most of we aren't around anymore, but that, that as long as I'm here, I keep reminding you.
Thank you, Tom. Any other questions? Let's get back to the, uh, public hearing portion, then we can ask a bunch more questions at the very end of this. Uh, is there anybody else who wants to speak on behalf of the applicant? Is there anybody that wants to speak, uh, in opposition of the applicant? Is there anybody that just wants to get up and speak?
My name is Carissa Brewer. I live on Farmstead Road. And I just have a couple of concerns of how much this is impacting me. I recently moved out here about two years ago to start my own homestead farm um, and raise my family. And I love my place because I am close to a path, but I am definitely off a path. And so I have my own little area, um, walking distance to the park, all the beautiful things. I am very worried about the pathway for sure with, um, vandalizing, excuse me, theft, any things. I mean, there's been times where I am fortunate enough to live in a spot where I have left my keys in the car overnight and I didn't have to worry about anything. As living in Portland, I would have lost a car, you know, so that's something that I still want to hold dear. I hope to live here for the rest of my life and, um, I don't want any random strays getting the idea that this is a welcome community back there when, um, like it's been said, there's really nothing back there. I mean, it's like a handful of houses and we all kind of keep to ourselves anyways. And then it turns into a gravel private road that no one goes on. So I think there is maybe three houses along the way of where the cul-de-sac that's going to be at, that is going to be mainly hit. And I have a two-year-old and having traffic from industrials. I already have kids on the road that are teenagers that just fly by us there. So a lot of that scares me. Um, and then my one other thing with that being said is there is any possibility of maybe a wall, a privacy fence or something to actually like block off Farmstead Road. So it's just not as accessible to people. I know that our traffic has picked up. People just randomly, I don't know if they think there's a river access or just going out for a Sunday drive, but it's crazy how many times we just see people like turning back and forth on there when there's never really been that much traffic when we started out. So, um, yeah, I guess that is a lot of my concerns about this development of how much it's going to affect my life living there. Whether it be the noise, the lights, pollution in general, trash, people being there 24 hours a day, like what will this do being that I am a hundred foot into this property? How much is this affecting my future is really something that I want to have clarified and see, yeah, where we can come up with that.
Thank you. Okay. Would anybody else like to, uh, speak? With regards to the application? Doesn't look like it. So let's go ahead and we'll go out of the public hearing and back into the planning commission meeting. At this point in time, uh, I'll ask for a motion. Um, Alan, would you mind bringing up our options there for approval?
Sorry, I thought, I thought we were discussing again. So I guess I, I'll, I'll, I have a comment. Is that possible?
Yeah, it is. Uh, technically we need a, a motion and then we can discuss.
Okay.
A motion is second, then we can discuss. And then if we don't like that motion, we can vote it down.
Well, I would make a motion then to, um, approve this with removal of the condition of a walking path and have instead a fence.
You're talking specifically about the western edge, right?
Yes.
So Commissioner Perkins made that motion?
What type of fence specify?
Uh, chain link fence. What, you know?
How tall?
What?
How tall?
Thirty feet barbed wire and gun turrets, electric. If we can assume that was sarcasm.
I, I hope so.
Purpose of the motion.
Just for the sake of discussion, I'll second it.
All right. So we have a motion and we have a second from Commissioner Hartwig. Let's go ahead and discuss in depth. Tara, you want to take it away?
Yeah, I, I would just echo, um, what Carissa said, and I want to say thanks to Steve, um, for, for what you said too, and for the lights, um, you know, and, and being, uh, a concerned neighbor. Um, it, it is, we do get a lot of, um, random people walking through. Um, I, I think that that there's, there's really no upside to the footpath. Uh, you know, a five-foot path with a 10-foot easement is, is definitely going to be big enough to drive a car through. It's going to make people think that they should walk back there when there's, there's nothing for them to walk to, but, but a, a bunch of, you know, private homes and a, and a private road. So, um, and I, and I would also, I don't know if, if there's any point that this will be mentioned, but there, there were a bunch of, um, emails that came in from neighbors, uh, nearby that came in kind of last minute because they, people didn't know until recently about the, that path portion of it, but it, it does have significant, um, opposition from people that live or work on the road.
Thank you. Go ahead.
On the sidewalk that was, uh, talked about. I was there when this was incepted by the Mr. Park as a condition of approval for the entire industrial park. And to make that go away at this point is kind of, you know, it's got sidewalks, it's got curves, it's got drainage. And, uh, he said, go ahead and approve it. And he says, that's what it takes to make this industrial work. So we, uh, we approved him with those conditions and sent him on his way.
I'm not suggesting to remove the, the rest of the sidewalks.
Saying what I heard from his comments was why do we need that when nobody uses them? I'm probably that one person that walks your sidewalks.
Okay. Um, I'm just going to play devil's advocate a little bit here, uh, and more just questioning things. So is it Park Avenue that extends to Farmstead and then has a gate?
It's noble.
Noble. Thank you. Um, I don't remember any big fires down there or any emergencies, but a secondary access into the backside of the industrial park. Is that, has that gate ever been opened and utilized?
Not in my, not. No, and in fact, when there was a fire on River Mill, stopping people from getting out, uh, during the fires, when there was, if there was a transformer fire on River Mill and people couldn't use that road, uh, nobody came and opened up the other, the other road. I mean, that road exists and it's like, what? I don't know. Forty, fifty feet from where this one would be. So that's already there. And people can use it for fire access. And if you really needed to and wanted Ralph to murder you, you could drive a fire truck on the grass runway at the airport.
Okay. Any other discussion?
There's a.
So as, once we're into the public or the planning commission, again, we're done with the public hearing portion. Is that correct? So can I, can I close it down and ask for public comment? Once we have a motion in a second?
Once you have a motion in a second and you've discussed, can you close it down and ask for public comment? Could, I think you would need to withdraw the motion. You might need to withdraw the motion to reopen public comment.
Okay.
That's, that's the vote we're talking.
Okay.
Do we have the authority to do that as the planning commission?
We can make whatever recommendation we want to the city council.
Okay.
If we tell them to put a.
Thirty feet and electric, we couldn't say that.
We can say that. The city council can say, um, no, that's silly or yes, that's great. Let's go sixty.
Okay.
Hopefully they don't do that.
Thank you.
So at this point, we have a motion, uh, with conditions and the change of the pathway being deleted along with a fence line on the west, western edge. And we, and it was said it was thirty feet, but do we have a real idea? I have six-foot chain link?
Was the fence part of the motion?
The fence was part of the motion as I wrote it down.
Yeah. Okay. Question.
Yes.
Are there any requirements as far as visually between the fence and, and an industrial area and, and those homes? Are, are they required to have landscaping?
We would have to look the details in that zone.
There's a landscaping requirement for, there's like a general requirement in the light industrial zone that says five percent of any lot that gets developed has to be landscaped. Five percent of the area developed has to be landscaped. But it doesn't specify that it needs to be along the fence line or along the border with a residential zone or anything like that. There are setbacks from the residential zone, I believe, that apply in the industrial zone, but that's for structures.
Right. Is there a height restriction?
No.
And one last thing, uh, with regards to fencing, I remember a previous application on Noble. I think it was the diesel shop that wanted to go in there and they wanted outdoor storage and they wanted a fence with razor wire, barbed wire, whatever on top. Any outdoor storage has to be fenced. Is that correct?
Outdoor storage has to be screened from view. So it doesn't have to be fenced. It could be screened with side obscuring vegetation or some other side obscure. It's obscuring the sight that matters and not necessarily enclosing or preventing access.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't duplicating something that's already in the code that requires them to fences. Okay.
May I ask another clar, sorry, uh, another clarifying question? And so the fence that we're recommending is really to protect the people who live on the other street from, uh, unwanted or unauthorized folks or pedestrians. But won't it just be, uh, common sense that once somebody inhabits that specific property that borders that, won't the business who owns that want to put their own fence up to protect their assets? And is that a burden we want to place on the person who's purchasing the property? When in fact, it might be best interest for the property owner who either buys or rents it. Uh, is a question I would wonder. Uh, and then secondly, is it code or requirement for this pathway to exist, which is why we're talking about that? And I assume that there's a subjugated cost to whatever it talks for this path. And can those costs be deviated to other SDCs? To, I don't know, improve in a different direction? And can it hold a softball or youth soccer field?
I don't think the cost of the path, so I'm going to try to answer that. One, um, I don't think we have a mechanism for taking the cost they would have paid to install the path and you know, basically donating that into an SDC bucket. I don't know enough about SDC, the like statute, statutory rules for SDCs, but I don't think that we could do that. And the reason. And the reason that that path was included was basically normally, if you have, you have Farmstead Road classified as a minor collector, normally we would have had the entire street punch all the way through. And so without having the full street punch through, the pedestrian path would just maintain some access. You know, you would maintain the pedestrian connectivity, but not the vehicle connectivity. So it's kind of a middle ground solution for, okay, we're sort of breaking our own code. What is a compromise there? But if the planning commission and council agree that that path doesn't make sense, then that can be taken out by the council. So.
Thank you.
You asked a bunch of other questions too.
Well, no, I think you answered the question. I, I mean, I guess it's up to the iLabyholder. I, I'm a little more reluctant about recommending or requiring the property owner to be forced to put any type of fence up when I just don't know if it's to the best interest other than to the community at large, which I understand. That just seems like an expensive request.
Yeah, and it does raise the question of, we would want to know for writing that condition of approval, who's going to own and maintain the fence?
Yes.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine to take that off of there. I, I can't imagine anyone being in there and not wanting a fence up. And I don't know if this plan is going to involve ripping out the low fence that's there on at least most of the property now. There is a note and there's a letter from a resident in here asking for one and and again, there were probably what, five emails or six emails that came in? Seventy mils from residents and people that have businesses on the road opposing the footpath. And I don't know if any of them asked for a fence. But yeah, if, if the, if the fence is a real sticking point for, for people, that's fine.
Can, can we put a timeline on there that it's before final inspection of, or fa- final occupancy of whatever said business is?
I like that.
I mean, it's passing the buck to whatever, whoever the end user is.
To the individual end users.
But if somebody puts a, a zero lot line building, can we go zero lot line on Farmstead because it's residential? So I mean, if they put a.
Oh, no, you couldn't. You would have a twenty-foot setback?
If they're budding up against Farmstead, that's not, that's not a residential lot technically. So on those lots.
Right.
They could maybe go zero.
So what I'm thinking is if they have a hundred-foot lot and they have an eighty-foot building, they're only going to need to build ten feet on either end to complete that. And that's going to do a better job obscuring anything than, because it's just going to be a big blank wall essentially. Than a chain link fence. Or even if they do have a twenty-foot setback, they can hold the fence back and get creative with it. But the, the thought of making somebody put a chain link fence up that, you know, might inhibit construction or something later on.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just thinking about the logistics of our permitting process and what mechanisms we have available for tracking that requirement and flagging it at the time, like if, if we were to say any lot that develops in this subdivision that's along Farmstead needs to put in that fence along the back part of the lot before we issue their certificate of occupancy. I am worried about what we would need to set up administratively to make sure that that requirement doesn't fall through the cracks. And I don't have a solution to that.
Okay.
At the top of my mind right now.
One last urban growth question or whatever question, but if I were on that cul-de-sac and my business did bounce up against Farmstead Road or whatever that's called, would I have the ability to create my own front entrance and access to that road if I was the end cul-de-sac user? Something would prohibit me from being able to do that?
Yeah, I think there was, um, I thought there was a condition of approval that said something like drive new accesses directly from Farmstead to any of the lots in this subdivision would be prohibited.
Okay.
So they should not be taking, there should be no access vehicular access taken from Farmstead. And if the pedestrian path doesn't go through either, then there would be no type of access at all permitted to be built to Farmstead.
Thank you. Can I read a section of code that's in the staff report? When a lot or parcel abuts two or more streets of different classifications under EMC sixteen dot one-one-six one, or dot zero-three-zero, or the lot or partials access point shall connect with the road of lesser classification. For example, access points on local streets shall be preferred to access points on collectors. So doesn't that say right there that we would prefer you to access off of Farmstead?
Technically, because Farmstead is currently a higher classification than than Park Avenue, which it seems many people agree it shouldn't be.
So you could.
But regardless, whether it gets demoted to a local street or not, or even if it does get demoted to a local street, we can still include a condition of approval in this land use approval that says no new accesses should be taken from Farmstead Road.
Okay. All right, we've gone around the world twice here. Rick, you got one more?
The only question I have is, is that truly planning for the future? So thirty years down the road, when all the residents are gone, what happens?
There, there's, there's a street, there's a street twenty feet away from this that goes into the freaking industrial park. I, what benefit would there possibly be to anyone punching this through? So that people go backwards down a residential street and up the corner. I mean, what is the, this is such a, it's such an interesting thing that it's be, it's, I mean, I ca- I cannot imagine a scenario where that road is, as a punch through is, is needed. That, I guess that's my question back. What, what would that scenario be that, that, that a road, there's a benefit to a road being there?
That someday it turns into vibrant restaurants and food carts and other things that actually attracts people to walk on the sidewalks.
Of, of food, are there going to be restaurants and food carts?
I'm just saying hypothetically, maybe.
But, but this isn't a hypo, it's like a realist, a real question. We think that there's going to someday be a UGB ex- expansion so that, so that people can't walk twenty feet down to go, to go up the next road over. That it's going to be so, I mean, that it just doesn't make any sense. They could go tw- they could go twenty feet down, forty feet down, whatever it is to, to Noble, or they could go up the other, the other direction. I mean, you, you, you're talking about something people walking thirty feet out of their way, thirty years in the future, when you have every resident of that road, including the businesses on that road, saying, don't do this. How is that good planning?
Sure. Well, it's opinion from the owners. I, I agree with you on the planning and I'm not for the pathway as well. But I also want to encourage in our local communities. Let's say that Amazon wants to put a distribution hub in this spot right here. That's definitely going to require a need for a different access. Let's say that there is a different delivery and or distribution company that's looking to thrive in our community. And all I'm saying is, I'm, I actually am in agreement with you, but I'm in disagreement with what you're saying. But I agree that, that there is Noble Road right there. All I'm saying is it would be wise of us, which is what your question is. It would be wise of us to think outside the box, like, like he's referring to. Because we don't know what's going to be inside of this. And it is a possibility, just like those three entry points from the old highway, the highway now fail. And so we have to put a traffic light or a roundabout. It is possible ten, fifteen, twenty years from now, as I look at population projections, that this industrial park is in fact going to thrive. And I just want to make sure that there's a, an availability.
If that was to happen, then why wouldn't we look at changing the road then, rather than putting in a situation now? I mean, the way this, this place is, the nineteen lots that's being subdivided into, there's not, the biggest lots are not even from what I remember, the ones that are on Farmstead. You're not going to put an Amazon distribution center backed up against that road anytime soon. If it was to change, if there's a UGB expansion, if there's a radical difference in the scenario, it's not that big of a deal to connect those roads.
Agreed.
But it does affect people's lived experience day to day right now to, to make those decisions based on conjecture. I mean, definitely, but it can, making plans for the, for the UGB to expand. I mean, if we start doing that, we're, you know, we're, we're going to be, we're going to be making a lot of decisions that are very different than what we're making right now.
Agreed.
Go ahead.
What he just said kind of sparked what I'm about to say, and I can't believe I'm going to get it out right, but I'm going to try it anyway. So if we're going to take a cul-de-sac and go up to, let's say, the UGB, do we have to take our utilities clear to the fence line in case somebody ever decides to annex the airport property and build something on it? Or do we just wait and see and tear the streets up at that time?
Wouldn't, wouldn't the airport electricity come from Hypal Road?
Talk about sewer and water.
Wouldn't the sewer and water come from Hypal Road?
I'm just talking about our, our city utilities.
Yeah. No, not necessarily. Yeah, it's all good. So one outside the box thought, since we're thinking that way. What if we created a, a tract? It was just a twenty-foot wide tract that had a fence that matched the rest of the fence. Hard, hard locked on the Farmstead side that would allow future expansion. It would be a city-owned track, much like the stormwater tract is. City maintained. It goes off the end of the cul-de-sac and utilities can stop there. Because when the wastewater treatment plant gets put in the rock pit, I know it's not part of the discussion today, but that's my plan. Is they're going to need to go through there. And that's the perfect access to go through there. It could be a gravel road off the end of the cul-de-sac, whatever distance wide.
Could it be an easement instead of something that the city has to run and maintain?
You guys can make it whatever we want, or I guess we can make it whatever we want, but at least it allows. It's, it's, it's non-designated. It's just like that piece on the northeast corner that, or northwest corner that's a stormwater tract. And then we don't have to put a gravel access. Farmstead people are okay. But if all the Farmstead people leave in thirty years and the wastewater treatment plant's down there next to food carts and everything else, then everybody's happy.
It's a great place to hang out.
And, and if there was such an easement there and the city did at some point in the future decide we do want Farmstead Road to be a minor collector or major collector, we do want to expand the urban growth boundary in that direction. Then there would be that easement there and available for the city to build out the street at that later point in time, if ever it becomes sensible
Yep.
to do that.
Or, yeah.
Sure.
Twenty feet or though. I don't know what the number is.
So now, so you're saying that the twenty feet and then so they can't build on that section?
So looking at the map here, instead of that single line, there'd be two parallel lines. It would just have a dedicated tract, much like this, except skinnier.
Right, but so then nobody can build right up to that. You're, you're telling them that they can't, they can't build within a that they have to leave a twenty-foot space open?
It's no different than any other development, making access to the next property to build more, whatever they're going to build.
We're, I mean, we've already required a ten-foot easement along the, along Farmstead in this. But this, doesn't it ask for a ten-foot easement on Farmstead?
Yeah, public utilities, easement, yeah, the applicant.
Yes, there is already a ten-foot easement on Farmstead.
Yeah, so it would just continue this on just like this.
Okay, so there's a, there's an easement in there and nothing else?
Right, it's just a.
No track. Okay.
So we have a motion, we have a second. It does include that public tract or, yeah, public tract or easement or whatever we want to call it at this point in time. We can either, I guess we have to either vote down this motion or, or uphold the motion. Is there any other questions?
To clarify, you just said we have a motion on the table that does not include that tract that you just talked about, or easement.
Right, I, I can't make a motion, right?
Right, got it, okay.
But the motion is for some type of fence, correct?
The current motion that's on the table was to remove the shared use path and to require a fence instead along Farmstead.
And approve with all other conditions.
Can, can we make an amendment to that? As far as adding that twenty-foot easement?
Think some, sorry.
Do you want, I think it might be cleanest if we just vote down.
Yeah.
Okay.
Either wrote it down or you can withdraw it. You can withdraw a motion or you can vote down the motion.
I'll withdraw it.
Okay, so we have no motion on the floor.
Great.
Can I take the opportunity to close the planning commission meeting and have the applicant come and speak to the public tract? So I'm going to do that. I'm going to close the public here, or the planning commission meeting. And I'm going to ask the applicant to come and speak, or the engineer to come speak on the public tract idea. And if that solves some of the issues.
Well, I think it goes down to the whole point if, in reality, if it's ever going to, is this something it's ever going to happen. Realize that it devalues the property too. You know, I understand that you do easements for things that are going to be used. You do PG easements because PG may have to get to that wire to fix it. So we're saying, well, let's just make this land nonusable. Okay, we can't, you could park something there. But it immensely, the, those are smaller lots on the end. And it immensely devalues the property. For what purpose? It's never going to, it's not going to go through. There's not going to be a reason for it. So the point is, it's a return of investment. You know, we want to be smart, look ahead, but I, I, I just personally that it's, you're going to this private, which it will be a private road. There will be no need to go there to go into the rock pit. So anyways, that's our opinion. It's, it's, it's taking money from us. And we're investing a lot of money into property, you know, to do a development. And I, I just think there's no return of a value on it in the long term. Right?
Thank you. Okay, let's jump back at the planning commission meeting. Need a motion?
I'll do that. And knowing that we're just a recommending body, I think is a nice context in this as well. And so Chair Wheeler, I move to approve the motion and to recommend to the city council to create some type of boundary to protect the people on Farmstead and the assets of the industrial park.
You're, you're approve, want, uh, a motion to approve it with a walking path?
No. Oh, I'm sorry, excluding the walking path. Well, no, actually, I'm motioning to approve it. It's the city council who determines if there's a walking path or not.
Why would the city, I mean, no, the city.
Maybe take it away too.
That's not a.
Right, so.
We can put it there, but maybe take it away.
Sure.
We're just.
This is the kind of thing that people in Astocata feel alienated. You have every single stakeholder in this scenario, every business owner, every person that lives on this road, in, including the person whose property this is, saying they don't want that. And then, and then we're going to go ahead and do it. It's, it's.
Well, I, I think you probably need to check the situation first of all, because I know that there's a city council member who's sitting right next to the people who are doing this work. I know what the outcomes are going to be. And so I'm fine with what this looks like. There are two city council people sitting right here. They understand the intent of what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, then why are we sent, why would we, why would we send it to them with a walking path as if that's our recommendation if it's not?
I'm becau- I'm happy to. I will add, amend that we do not also want to see a walking path on here. I guess that was just assumed.
Well, it's a condition of approval. So if we, if we're going to remove that condition of approval, then we should, then the proposal should say that.
Okay, I'm fine with adding that.
So, so no walking path?
No walking path and a fence, right? And approval of the plan other than that.
Okay. So we have a motion by.
But let me check, does that meet your needs?
If there's, if there's no walking path and there's a fence?
Yes.
And we're not doing the twenty-foot easement?
Correct.
Then yeah.
So we have a motion on the floor from Commissioner Carpenter. Do we have a second?
Second.
We got a second from Rick Cox and a third from Richard Hartwig. Uh, any more discussion needed? Again, this is a recommendation to city council on June twelfth. I believe.
Yes.
Uh, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, uh, you guys will be headed to city council, June twelfth. And if you have any questions for staff between now and then, uh, you know, full well, we're to find them, and they're happy to help. Thank you. Okay, let's take a minute here to get reorganized, we're gonna jump into. Uh, partition twenty twenty-three dash zero three dash L P. The applicant Mac, uh, even is proposing a three-lot partition of the forty-one point zero three acres on Deuce Road. Staff, if you would like to present the staff report, that would be excellent.
Okay. Alright, so this is, um. Partition file number twenty twenty-three dash O three dash L P, which stands for land partition. Um, and this is for a three-lot partition called Bonnie Meadows. The, um, planning commission's decision tonight will be the final decision unless it's appealed to Luba. A partition application does not then go to the city council. So the applicant for this proposal is Mac Even. Um, and the representative along with him is Ray Moore with All County Surveyors. And as I said, they're proposing a three-lot partition, the property is three one seven nine zero Southeast Deuce Road. Also known as tax lot two hundred in the staff report. Um, this is the same property that was approved in twenty twenty-one for subdivision, a subdivision called Dugan Estates, phases three through seven. That subdivision approval is valid for four years, so through twenty twenty-five. Um, they're proposing to rename that subdivision Bonnie Meadows instead of Dugan Estates. And this partition is, um, they're specifically requesting to just create. These three lots in order to facilitate the sale of those lots to different developers. To develop the different phases of this subdivision. More on that in a moment. Um. So this is an aerial view of the subject property. Dugan Estates, phases one and two are the kind of long north-south property to the east. Deuce Road is directly to the north of the property and Deuce Road is the urban growth boundary. The Northbrook subdivision, which was also recently approved, is directly to the west. And the Coyote Ridge subdivision, which was the most recent residential subdivision approved, is to, um, the west and south of this property. Here is the proposed partition plat. So this partition would create two smaller parcels to the north of Curran Creek. Um, that horizontal dividing line runs right along Curran Creek. Um, and then so one part, one larger parcel would be to the south of Curran Creek. And those lot lines, as I mentioned, would run along roughly along the phase lines of. The future subdivision. Um. So this is shown, I pulled this up here and this was included in their application packet. They're not proposing to plat all of those new lots with this partition, this is just for your reference, that's. The future subdivision that we can expect to follow this partition. Um, so looking at approval criteria. The staff report goes into a bunch of detail about how this proposal meets or could meet. All of the code criteria that apply to it, but basically in some, um, there are these two key. Variables for any partition, and that is, or any land division in the city, and that is that every new lot needs to have street access. Obviously lots one and two that are right along Deuce Road have access from Deuce Road, but lot, uh, parcel three. Would not have any access from a public street until. That adjacent subdivision, Dugan Estates Phase One comes in, I printed out some eleven by seventeens, um, that most of you have. On your desk that show, the first page is the partition plat. The second page is that future subdivision, and then the third one is from Dugan Estates Phases One and Two. On that third page, did I put it up on the screen, can you go to the next slide? No, I didn't. Um, on that third page, where you can see Dugan Estates Phases One and Two, it's printed in color. Um, you see the street called Northeast Sampson Avenue. That's the street that will abut parcel three when it gets platted, or when it gets dedicated. But, um, it's not yet dedicated, so one of the conditions of approval is just making sure that. That public street gets dedicated before, um, before this plat. Gets recorded to make sure that each parcel does indeed have access from a public street. We don't wanna create a situation, we don't wanna get stuck with a situation where there is a parcel we've created and it doesn't have any street access. Um. We can go more into that if you want to, but we, it, there are properties in the city that have that issue and we've. Had some difficult conversations with interested applicants that can't develop because their lot doesn't have any access to a street. Um, the other criteria that needs to be met is that. Public improvements need to be provided to each of the new lots, so that is your frontage and half-street improvements, you need to make sure that. Whatever street is abutting, the property is built out to its, um. The standards associated with its classification. Deuce Road is currently proposed to be upgraded from a minor to a major collector with this T S P update that we're doing. That does not change, that doesn't actually change the width of the right-of-way that they would need to dedicate. It just changes some of the specifics about the improvements that would go within that cross-section. Um, so the conditions of approval that are, that we're proposing are to just. Apply whatever the adopted standards are at the time they come in for development permits. And then, um, the other public improvements that need to be provided to each lot are city sewer and city water. We'll carry on, um, so regarding these improvements, as I mentioned, this partition is. Being proposed not so that they can develop each of the three lots as individual lots. They're, they're partitioning in order to sell the phases of the subdivision. Um, they can talk more about exactly how that helps them, but, um. Because of that, because they're anticipating developing the subdivision and not developing this partition. They are asking not to have to put in any of those public improvements, um, which makes sense. It would not make sense for us to have them put in frontage improvements. For this partition if they're just gonna come in and subdivide a couple of years later. Um, however, approving the partition does not bind them to develop the subdivision. So as I mentioned before, the city needs to make sure that we aren't taking on this, um. That we aren't approving the creation of. Undevolvable lots or burdened lots, unimproved lots, unserviced lots, um, that never end up. Getting developed with the subdivision that they are intending to develop. So, um, the conditions of approval are written to make sure that. If something goes wonky with their plans and they don't end up developing one or more of these parcels with the intended subdivision. We've still made sure that the very basic city services and improvements have been provided to the lots that now exist. The way that we have done that. To allow them to move forward with their sale without having to put in these improvements before plating is. Um, providing some flexibility on the normal way that we do this. Normally, we would make sure that they have either completed the improvements or bonded for them before. We approve their plat, which is the creation, the recordation of the new lot lines. Um. The flexibility we're proposing here is to allow them to guarantee in writing, notarized. Um, and recorded on the plat, this guarantee that they will, that the applicant will, um. Install the public improvements within three years of this land use approval. Um, and the penalty for not complying with that would be a lien that the city puts on the entire property involved. Um. Which would just be in the amount of the improvements that should, should have been put in, um, and so. Yeah, that's about it, if you have more questions about that, we can look at the exact language of that in a moment. So, um, I just wanna make sure I'm not forgetting. Yeah, we're gonna get to it, okay. So there are a total of seven recommended conditions of approval. Just, this first one is just clarifying exactly what is being approved, the next one. The second one is capturing that requirement that I just described. Where they have to guarantee that public improvements will be provided within three years of this approval. Um. That three-year deadline gets extended or suspended if they come in with. Either a subdivision extension request or a modification, a new subdivision application or. Um, actually moving forward with the subdivision that they have in place, the subdivision approval that they have in place. Um. As I said, the penalty for not complying with that condition would be imposing a lien on all three of the new parcels. Um, in the amount of the cost of those required public improvements. Um, and then the third condition. Requires that. The plat needs, which gets recorded, needs to include, basically just include language documenting. That second condition of approval, just crossing our Ts and dotting our Is. Um, the fourth one calls for, this one was updated. Um, so the original condition number four called for the entire length of that Northeast Sampson Avenue to be. Dedicated before we could plat this new partition. Um, and the applicants requested that that be changed to just, can you go to the next slide? Just this, um, seventy-five point four three foot. Segment of frontage that would be plotted with phase one of Dugan Estates, and that is, that is enough frontage. To provide access from a public street, so we don't see any problem with that, so we've changed condition four accordingly. And then condition five has also been updated. Um, we don't see a need to require that ten-foot public utility easement along Northeast Sampson. Um, so we would take that out. And then number six and number seven are both standard plating requirements, we can talk about those if you need to. So.
Taylor, can we go back to condition four?
Yeah.
Uh, sorry, oh, yeah, and then the map on that. So I'm just trying to orientate myself.
Yeah, sorry, this, what we're looking at is the southeastern corner of parcel three. So to the right is the Dugan Estates. Is mostly Dugan Estates Phase Two, but at the very south is a little piece of Dugan Estates Phase One.
What's the, what's the purpose of that seventy-five feet again?
Each new parcel needs to have access from a public or private street.
I'm just trying to figure out why is it, cause is that the dividing line, is the line that, at the top of seventy-five point four three, is that the dividing line between phase one and two?
Yeah. You can, if you look at the, um, the colored Dugan Estates, um, yeah.
It's this one, right, right?
Yeah, they, they put phase one in yellow and phase two in orange, so it's a little clearer.
Alright, that, we don't need to talk about that anymore then. Uh, then the next, uh, slide. Should be good. Uh, you go back to that, so. Is that referencing this? Where's north? The western edge of Sampson?
It would be along the western edge of Sampson, however, a- and if we. I, I don't see any difference either way, I don't know what all is involved in. Creating and recording and then changing an easement, if we require an easement along Sampson Avenue and then, um. For whatever reason, whenever they come in for subdivision, it needs to change, that just will be a, yet another thing that needs to get done.
But when phase three develops, that's these ones here, right?
Phase, so there's only two phases in what you're looking at, what you're looking at is Dugan Estates Phases One and Two. And then you mean parcel three of this partition?
Uh, hang on a sec. I don't know why I'm so confused today, I apologize. What's the, what's the subdivision just south of there? West of there, sorry.
See where you're put, south of the subject site would be, um, Coyote Ridge.
Okay. I'm okay with it, I just wondering the premise behind it, but I, I'm, I'm okay with what you explained.
Okay. So those are all the conditions, um. And with all of those, we're recommending approval, and I think that even with the flexibility we're requesting on delaying. But guaranteeing those, um, public improvements, if the subdivision doesn't go through, um. We think that that gets at the intent of the code, even if it's not exactly the way that it's normally done. That's all I have for my presentation.
Okay. Uh, any questions on the staff report?
I just have a quick one, so that I understand, so. Is there a scenario where three years passes, the economy has gone crazy and terribly crazy? And they can't sell this, or we would still require them to. Put in these improvements?
That's what that condition would require.
That's, that seems harsh, but. I'd be curious to know from the applicant if that's, seems fine to them or what, what the.
Any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and, uh, ask for public comment, we'll enter, or we'll exit the planning commission meeting. Enter the public hearing for this said, uh, partition. And if the applicant or representatives would like to come to the mic and speak, introduce yourself and fire away.
Hi, my name is Tracy Brown, I'm a land use planning consultant and, uh, we have Mac Even. Uh, the applicant and Ray Moore with All County, uh, surveyors and engineers. So I was the one that put together the land use application on behalf of the applicant. And prior to being a consultant, I was the planning director in the city of Sandy for fifteen years. So pretty familiar with how the stuff works. Yeah, we, you know, the, as, um, Taylor mentioned, the real intent. Of, for the applicant to do this is to be able to kind of divvy up the property. In order to sell it to some other folks to then develop, you know, as, as Taylor mentioned, the, uh. You know, the, the property already has the preliminary plat approval and various phases of that, so. That wouldn't need to happen again, it just needs to be constructed. And, you know, because of the economy and various factors, it just makes sense to kind of parse it up a little bit. Rather than doing it all at one time. So as we kind of looked at the recommended conditions. And I think one of the commissioners kind of keyed in on that, we, initially, we were a little bit caught off guard with the three-year. Uh, timeframe, I mean, I think we're fine with that, although we, it probably would do. Uh, the applicant better if that were extended five years, um, there's all intent. To make this happen as soon as possible, but if something arose such a, such as an economic downturn. Those timelines may be a little bit tighter. The only other, uh, thing I would also talk about is, nobody can bring up a condition, I would just, there's a couple. Little, uh, words, mything things in condition three that I'd like to point out, um, if possible. And we're generally fine with it, and actually, condition for the new conditions that Taylor mentioned. And we're generally fine with it. And actually, Condition Four, the new conditions that Taylor mentioned. Um, those were, that was based on information that we provided. So this, this one, I guess the, I guess this is something for you to consider. We would like to see if the, um, I guess the second line where it, or the third line in this, where it talks about the partition applicant, Mac Even. We would prefer that saying the property owner, um, would be kind of on the hook for that. If the property is sold, for example, it's hard to kind of then pin somebody else to making improvements. So whoever the property owner is at the time should be the one responsible for these improvements. Let's see. And that kind of carries down a couple of line. There's another little bit different formatting than my.
Where it says the applicant's failure to satisfy.
Yes, yes. Thank you very much. And then there was also, I guess, maybe I'll just stand over here and point to it. Talked about one of the two parcels and actually it's three parcels. Understand there's probably, uh, the other partition that was going to be before you. It's two parcels. This one was three. Um, so we just want, that's just more of a editing kind of thing. We wanted to point out. I think that's, yeah, that's, uh, I guess direct, uh, requested or recommended uh, changes we'd like to see to the conditions. And I don't know if there's any questions for me as the planning consultant who put this together. Uh, I pro, I, after I speak, I'll maybe have, uh, Mac stand up real quick. And then if Ray wants to say anything about the, uh, uh, the road dedication, we can also do that.
Okay. Any questions? Thanks for coming up and speaking.
All right, thank you.
Mac or Ray, if you want to take the mic, please introduce yourself and take it away.
Mac Even, I'm the developer. Yeah, the purpose of this, and honestly, it's kind of, we're, we're trying to get this done as quickly as we can because, um, we're uh, I'm going to be selling the property and we, like, uh, somebody said, um, we don't want to develop all these lots at one time. There's a hu- over a hundred and forty of them and that would pretty much saturate the market. And so we want to phase it over years. So this gives us the ability to break it apart and easier to accomplish that. And, uh, um, we are, I believe they're paving Phase One. I, I think they're doing it today, the right, right now. So those improvements on that Sampson Street are actually, I know the sewers in, uh, curbs are in, everything's there. They're either paving it today, tomorrow, but it's happening this week. And so those improvements are going to be complete, um, before I can get through the rest of the process to record this partition. Um, and then the rest of it, we're on final engineering of the entire subdivision. Um, we've had red lines go back and forth between the city and the county. And by the way, I really, to echo the, the last, uh, applicant. I really enjoy working with the city. You guys are wonderful. And if you could maybe get some of this to rub off on some of the people of Clackamas County, that would be helpful. Because I have to deal with them on Deuce Road. But, uh, but yeah, I mean, we're, we're gonna be turning in another set of red lines next week to both the city and the county. And we anticipate having approvals of the entire subdivision within thirty to sixty days. And, uh, and then probably start construction on Phases One and Two, um, a little later this summer. So this is, it's all happening. It's all lined up and ready to go. This, the reason why we're doing this is, um, we used to be able to sell parts of properties to do phase subdivisions. Well, they changed some of the state laws and everything and it makes it much more difficult for title companies and title insurance and things like that to be able to, to, you know, sell parts of properties. And so, um, we were, we kept, you know, running into a problem with that. So it came up with the idea of doing this to try to alleviate that problem, make it a little more easier to get accomplished. So. Did anybody have any other questions for me?
Yeah, I'm just curious, the, the, the reason that you're doing this, um, wa- was because of some, some of the law changes. It sounds like from the state. Is that pretty recent? A- and I guess my, my question would be more of a general one, maybe, maybe for you, Taylor, do we expect to see something like this happen with future subdivisions, um, plans?
I hope not. Administratively. No- nothing personal.
Sure, sure. I, I.
Our code.
It's not anything I want to do either.
Our code isn't set up for it. So you would, you know, it would be great for us to have a clear path for that type of thing to be allowable in our code without having to kind of strategize creatively about, okay, how do we protect the city while helping them get done what they need to do? Um, but we don't have that right now. And I don't know what the state statute changes have been for.
And I just wonder if what we're doing today, if that, if this could be setting the precedent as well too, not, not to take away from it at all. Um, just with the slowdown in the market, if, if this is a way that, uh, to help the subdivisions sell things more methodically or purposefully. It's, I don't know, seems like it could be the start of something too. Just saying.
Thanks, Paul. Any other questions? Thanks, Mac.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to come up, speak on behalf of the applicant? Anybody want to speak in opposition to the applicant? Or just come up and speak? Okay, good. Here we go. Um, without any further questions, let's go ahead and enter back into the planning commission portion of our meeting. Um, Alan or Taylor, would you mind bringing up the conditions of approval?
For the, like the next step slider?
Yep. Please. So this, uh, I think you mentioned it before. This is a, this is our decision. Uh, and they can appeal it to Luba if they don't like our decision, but hopefully we have the wherewithal to make a good one on this. Um, so approve the condition, conditions, uh, approve changes, deny or continue. So any motion out there?
I'll make the motion that, uh, with the changes of what he asked for as property owner rather than Mac Even at the time of whenever, that, that seems like, uh, a good idea. Um, I'll make a motion for approval with conditions.
We got a motion with approval with conditions. Is there any, uh, legal thing we need to worry about with property owner on there?
Um, for this one, probably not. For this particular one, I don't anticipate that being a problem. I, I am fairly confident that they're going to move forward with the subdivision as planned.
Okay.
That's as much as I can say.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hartwig. We have a second?
I second it.
And we got a second. Now we can discuss if we need to?
Well, we're just ending it on to Paul and his party and he'll finish.
No, this is, this is our decision.
Well, this, this is, this is our decision for the vote, but they, they're not going to see this?
No, that, this is just planning commission.
This is just planning commission?
Yep.
Taken a bit, okay, okay. I'm on the wrong side of the same page.
It's okay.
All right, all right. Now I'm following you and.
Okay. Any other questions? Antonio, you've been pretty quiet today.
No, I'm just taking it all in.
I do have one comment, and really this is for Paul and the city as well, but at some point we have got to start looking at subdivisions that have softball and youth soccer fields and things that are incorporated into that code. So I look at, just saw a population study over the next ten years yesterday. And conservatively, our school district, ten years from now, will have four hundred more kids in it. And they'll be coming from these subdivisions. So at some point, I would love to lead or be a part of a conversation that requires in the future, proposals like this that do have larger field allocations to host uh, the myriad of youth activities that occur in this district, in this, in this city. So I just wanted to say that for comment.
When, when I was on the city council, we pushed for parks. Um, and we basically got them, but we lost them. Um, but there was never big enough for baseball and those kind of things. So I agree with.
Yeah.
Baseball parks and parking for them.
Yes, correct.
That's a bigger piece of the pot.
It is.
Maybe we could add that to a future planning commission agenda.
I would like that very much. Thank you.
Doesn't that tie in with one of the goals that we said as well too? I think to talk about incorporation of parks. To have something set in stone as opposed to it'd be good to have a park.
My only other question would be, do we want to give them five years? Does anyone have any issue with that?
I would posit that it's not very expensive for any land use applicant to come back in and request a minor modification to their, um, original approval.
Plus it's always nice as a commission to know what's going on too. So.
An extension, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So leaving it with three is what I'm hearing with the original motion. Any other discussion? All right, others in favor of this motion, please raise right in.
And that is unanimous approval?
Okay. Well, getting right along here. I believe those are the two items on our agenda. Is that correct?
Yep, just to repeat for the record, the other partition that was on the agenda has been, which is Partition Twenty Twenty-three dash zero-two dash LP was continued to June twenty-first, which will also be a two P M Wednesday Planning Commission meeting. And then question if it's appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Um, do you want to add this parks and recreational facilities area conversation to that next agenda?
Yes, please.
Yeah, there would also be, what else do we have on that agenda? There another partition? Or, okay, so two partitions and then that conversation. Okay.
In that agenda, could you potentially provide us with a couple of examples of what other communities may have done from a coding perspective? So we could also look at like what language might look like?
Yep.
Thank you.
You know offhand, if most of those, uh, things that Ryan's asking to reference uh, come along with Parks and Rec District, i.e. like North Clackamas or Alala Parks and Rec?
I don't know offhand, but we can look into that question too.
Just for the record, I don't advocate. Yeah, let me speak into the mic. I don't advocate creating another government body.
That sounds like a headache.
Uh, all right. Well, I think we got through everything.
One more, more thing. Oh, this is commissioner comments. Haha, um, I talked to Alan yesterday a little about him. Um, are we going to continue the two o'clock things? I see we, we talking next week or next month as that, so.
It's up to the planning commission. Um, it certainly helps staff when these are during the day. Um, and for these past two ones, we've just thrown out a few meeting time options and/or been looking at the city calendar and finding times that work. Um, and then we confirm whether there's a quorum for that time. But it would be great to actually, you know, confirm a regular meeting schedule where all of you assume that your meetings are going to be at that regular time.
So as is now, should we just assume that we have two different days in the, of the month is the case? Or should we just?
Can we do it just like a, how does this work? I mean, we're in a public meeting so we can take a vote, right?
Yeah, you could.
Does Wednesday at two P M work? What is this, the third Wednesday?
I will tell you my little discussion last night, yes, afternoon with with them. And as was, I don't personally like the afternoon, but since my wife is retired, she likes it.
I don't know how to take that.
I think it means exactly what you think. So I, I, when I found that out, I don't have a problem with it.
Uh, generally speaking for myself, uh, anytime after four P M gets increasingly harder with youth activities and adult activities that are mostly surrounded by youth activities. So that's my two cents. Uh, Rick, you got an opinion?
I, no, I can do it anytime.
How about Richard?
I'll be here.
As long as it's not during elk season, you're okay. Tara?
I liked afternoon.
Antonio?
Well, most of the time they work to five, so. What is it? What's it mean?
Third, we're talking right now about third Wednesdays at two P M.
All right, so I'll just, I'll just, uh, put a slip in.
You say it's jury duty. They have to continue. Public service.
Public service, man.
Okay, so let's, we can kind of continue the course. Oh, I, I'm sorry, I didn't, uh, ask, uh, Commissioner Carpenter.
I can make that happen.
I'll talk to your superiors.
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Paul?
I, if, if there's any more discussion on that, I just want to give a couple of council updates.
Uh, go ahead.
Uh, just to follow up with, uh, the last meeting, the council approved the, uh, Chinsing subdivision. And then also the, uh, uh, out of the, uh, the childcare, approved that as well too, along with the allowing of the youth activity or that recreational activity, uh, forget the name of it, to be, to be allowed in the industrial park as well too. So that's thank you for the recommendations. They've been approved by council. And then we are working on the traffic study plan as well too. There's a survey out there. If you've not taken it. Yeah, I think we've asked for prioritization in the past. They've really improved that survey. It, it puts the different recommendations in groupings. And I'd recommend to go out and to take that survey and to select your recommendations for priority, um, for the things that are out there for this traffic study plan. You can access it through the planning website. And we may have emailed you a copy of that survey as well too, do you know?
Yeah, I was going to say thank you for that reminder. I probab- you should have gotten an email from me saying oh, we got terrible turnout at our workshop. Please take the survey. Um, and just want to reiterate, like, there's so much information in that list of project recommendations and we are busy, but we, it's really important. We don't do this type of project very often. We will make the time, if you want to sit down and talk through any of that project list with us. We will absolutely make the time for you or your neighbors, whoever wants to, to do it in order for you to be able to take that survey and give us your feedback. So definitely let us know if you or anyone in your networks wants to sit down with staff or have a phone call about that.
I thought two things.
Okay.
For one, I see we hit the daycare centers, take over the forest service. I thought we couldn't do that.
We approved it. Yeah. Last meeting.
Yeah, the childcare, um, amendments were adopted as the planning commission recommended. Yeah, I don't know how far along they are. We haven't issued, we wouldn't be able to issue them a business license until those amendments go into effect, which will be thirty days after the council's adoption. So June twenty-first, the day of your next hearing.
Another thing is, did you check to see whatever costs or uh, soon or lease the space right beside for recreational?
We haven't checked any.
He brought it up and I took it, took it from him, so.
For the city to lease it or?
Well, it's, it's, uh, day property. He, we, we're talking about a, seen if we get a recreational.
Yeah.
Building that like a, you bitten, well, basketball.
Yeah, we approved that too, didn't we? Yeah, that, and that was part of the thing Paul is updating, right? Paul, that you guys went along with the recommendation of the indoor sports centers or with that extent of the industrial park there too.
The, yeah, so the, the, the stuff that Denise basically proposed at that last meeting, um, the rec- indoor recreational and athletic areas was, um, Um, the rec- indoor recreational and athletic areas was um. Permitted in not just the light industrial zone, but also riverfront commercial, which is where. That the Forest Service building and that lot um, highway commercial and. There was a fourth one.
Mill mixed use.
Mill area mixed use. That won't get developed anytime soon.
So, so you guys are on top of it, so.
Yep.
Okay.
One other, uh, the, they talked about in the lock property that we proposed. On the highway, either a stoplight or a roundabout. How is that decision actually made? And does the owner, if they're paying for that, do they have say in what that is, or is that a? Community conversation? I'm sure it's going to be a hot topic, because you just say the word roundabout and the word like no comes out of people's mouth before they've been like. Finished the sentence, but how does that process happen?
Yeah, it will, it wouldn't be, so the original staff report. Because of the original O dot comments had the developer putting in that signal that. Has been updated and so you'll, you have an updated version of the staff report printed out, most of you in front of you. Um, and the updated report will be, the planning commission's report will be updated to, to show that. Um, actually that is a city project. So since we have that adopted into our system development charge into our T S P. Um. The city would commission that project, you know, hire, we would put it out for bid and go through the whole public process for getting that project built. It would have to be in coordination with, it would have to be permitted by O dots. We'd go through O dots permitting process. And that's where the warrant analysis has to come in.
Okay.
Um, and so that is also, that warrant analysis, I assume would include kind of a comparison of. The traffic signal versus the roundabout getting put in. Um. I don't know how much leverage the city has in kind of lobbying for one or the other.
Okay.
I think our plan currently has that project adopted as just like some kind of, like it's optional. It's some type of traffic control, but it doesn't. Prescribe which one. Um, and so hopefully the warrant analysis would kind of give us that comparison. And then there's also the consideration of the cost difference. Roundabouts are more expensive to install upfront, but they are much cheaper. To maintain um, in perpetuity, so that's, and they're a lot safer, even though they're annoying.
Right.
So there's factors for the council to weigh, and then we will need to find out what. Um, how much kind of discretion O dot will give us ultimately on that project.
Thank you.
Yeah.
With the roundabouts, how often do you see them on state highways? So you see them on local-ish streets?
I'm sure that information exists. I don't know how to answer that.
There's one coming out on I'm Sigger.
Yeah, they're, they've made it Clackamas County.
That starts next year, should finish in two years, and they hinted that there'll be another one at the jackpot.
Yeah, that makes sense. If, I mean, I don't know if a roundabout makes sense, but it makes sense to have some type of traffic control there, yeah.
Sounds like roundabout it. It's for sure at I'm Sigger.
Yeah, yes.
They are gonna put a roundabout in.
Yep.
They have to do something.
Yes.
Killing people left and right.
Yeah, it's, it's huge. It's a big. It's a big roundabout. It's not, it's not a small town.
Yeah, it's semi trucks can go on it. It's a major, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh. Okay, wow. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Okay, let's uh, go ahead and adjourn the meeting at uh, three fifty-six.
Thank you very much. Good job, everybody.
There you go.
Yeah, here we go.
I don't know if you want to end the recording or not, but.
What, what road is this?